Evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of October 9th, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Here.
Councilmember Hickman?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is approval of the City Council's study session minutes of August 28, 2018. City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of September 25, 2018. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
By a show of hands, do I have a second? I'm sorry. Did I get a second? Second. Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes by a show of hands. Everybody in favor? Those opposed? That was unanimous. Item number four is a proclamation proclaiming Sunday, October 21, 2018 as Crop Hunger Walk Day in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Sunday, October 21, 2018 as Crop Hunger Walk Day in the city of Norman. Whereas at the end of World War II, many people wanted to share our country's abundance with European war victims, and Church World Service and crop's first purpose was to gather wheat and other crops from America's farms for shipment to Europe. And whereas today locally organized Church World Service sponsored crop walks are an important part of community life for more than 900 communities in the United States, bringing together people of different faiths and diverse cultures. And whereas each year crop walks help more than 1,500 local food pantries, food banks and meal sites in the United States provide food to neighbors in need, including Norman's Food and Shelter and to hungry people in over 35 countries. And whereas the annual Cleveland County Crop Walk has been part of our community for 34 years and takes place this year on October 21 to help our community become aware of and concerned about hunger and its causes. And whereas the Cleveland County Crop Walk will raise funds to help fight hunger both locally and globally, and has raised over $180,000 in the past 10 years. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do proclaim Sunday, October 21, 2018 as Crop Hunger Walk Day in the city of Norman and urge all citizens to support this walk. And I believe that Brenda Whitlock is going to accept the proclamation. You want to come up here and get the proclamation first?
Sure.
You're ready to talk.
While I'm at it, I would like to present you-
All right.
... a t-shirt with our theme this year, "Be Justice, Love Mercy and Walk Completely."
With your God.
And I will be walking with us at the end of this year.
I will be. Thank you very much. I'll be wearing this. Thank you so much. You want to say a few words, I think?
I would like to say a few words.
Oh, good. I've already got my shirt. I'm ready to go.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Miller and City Council members for your support of the Crop Walk. Today, the acronym CROP has come to stand for Communities Responding to Overcome Poverty. And the Norman community has responded in a big way, raising really more than $340,000 over 33 years to fight hunger locally through the work of Food and Shelter and globally through the development and relief work of Church World Service. More than 500 people annually participate in our three-mile charity walk along with support from dozens of Norman businesses, faith groups and civic organizations. The Crop Walk is a huge demonstration of our community's commitment to care for one another. And this year, our goal is to raise $20,000 to help those in need. I invite the council members and the citizens of Norman to join us at this year's Crop Walk at 1:30 Sunday, October 21 at Andrews Park. In addition to the walk, we'll have musical entertainment and antique car show, post-walk cookout. So come walk in solidarity with those less fortunate and enjoy the spirit of community working together for a good cause. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brenda. It's a great event and it's a lot of fun, and I hope I'll see a lot of council members out on that day. Item number five is a proclamation proclaiming the city of Norman's full support and participation in the census 2020. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Same sign. That was unanimous. The city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the city of Norman's full support and participation in the census 2020. Whereas the next decennial census will be taken in the year 2020, and political representation to the United States House of Representatives, state legislatures and local governments is determined by the census. And the census is also the basis for the distribution of many forms of intergovernmental financial assistance. And whereas the city of Norman mayor and city council recognize the importance and value of counting each and every resident in the 2020 census. And whereas the city of Norman has agreed to enter a partnership with the U.S. Bureau of Census, and the city's primary role in the partnership is to formulate a complete count committee, which should include but is not limited to the following representation: government, education, media, religious, business, special housing. And whereas the goal of the government is to bridge all gaps between the community and the Census Bureau on mapping outreach activities and information centers. And whereas the goal of education is to create census awareness programs for pre-kindergarteners to college-age students, including educational institution distribution of the Census Bureau educational materials. And whereas the goal of the media is to utilize all aspects, print and electronic, of its industry to inform, motivate and educate the city's residents in the necessity and importance of their rapid response and 100% participation in the census 2020. And whereas the goal of religious organizations is to form a cross-denominational effort for the dissemination of census information, inclusion of special announcements in church bulletins and sermons, and potential hosting of census awareness activities. And whereas the goal of business is to encourage all area businesses to convey the importance of the census to employees and to advertise the census message in promotional materials and display. And whereas the goal of special housing is to assist in the location and enumeration of shelters, dormitories, group homes, group quarters and other non-conventional housing facilities. And whereas the overall goal of the committee is to make citizens aware of the meaning and extreme importance of the census. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim full support and participation in the census 2020. And at this time, I'd like Tricia Woodward to come forward.
It's good to see you again. How are you? Would you like to say a few words? Okay.
Mayor Miller and council members, I was so excited while she read those words. It is very important that everyone's counted once and only once in the right place. And that is the goal of the Complete Count Committee. There are so many things that can be accomplished in our cities, and I am the only partnership specialist for the state of Oklahoma at present. So I'm excited to get this proclamation because it means that I have your support. We have your support. There is a dollar figure associated with each resident of the state of Oklahoma, and that's $1,675 per person, times 10 years. Now, we all know what that is. But then you multiply that times four people, because that's your other's household. And so you can imagine the amount of money that's lost to your area. And so the state of Oklahoma undercounted 4.6% of the children under five during the 2010 census. We don't know why people don't put the children on the form, but that's what the Complete Count Committee's role is, to make sure that children are counted so that there will be funds there. I could go on and on because I love this work, but I am so excited that you recognize the importance of completing your form. And the Census Bureau really appreciates your support. And there will be an area census office in Norman. I do not have the address, but I'm going to call Ms. Hall to make an appointment with the mayor to share that information and to let the public know that there are jobs available. Census.gov/fieldjobs or 2020census.gov for jobs. And so we would appreciate you referring people so that they can benefit, because it pays pretty good. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Item number six is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items seven through 23 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. That was unanimous. Item number seven, mayor's appointments of Curtis McCarty and Mike Thompson to the Board of Adjustment, Hossein Forzane, Ben Graves and Chris Purcell to the Economic Development Advisory Board, Eli Bridge, Andrew Sartain and Dane Hines to the Environmental Control Advisory Board, Rick Hall, Elizabeth Foreman, Michael Zorba and Mitch Baroff to the Historic District Commission, Sadie Orinella to the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board, Mary Womack, Dr. Mohamed Anwar and Dr. Diane Chambers to the Norman Regional Hospital Authority, and Gary Kramer to the Public Art Board. Item eight is submission of the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau FYE 2018 semi-annual report through June 30, 2018. Item number nine is submission of a report entitled Pioneer Library System Financial Statements for the Year Ended June 30, 2018, together with Independent Auditor's Report Prepared by Grave Blodgett &amp; Company, Certified Public Accountants. Item 10 is a bid for the purchase of Aggrega and Stone for the Street and Stormwater Divisions. Item 11 is a bid for the purchase of inlet frames, grates and curb hoods for the Street and Stormwater Divisions. Item 12 is a bid for the rental of Type II barricades for use by Street and Stormwater Divisions. Item 13 is a bid for the purchase of Portland Cement Concrete for Use by the Street and Stormwater Division. Item 14 is a public drainage easement from Foy Cox for the Lake Hurst Drive Stormwater Project. Item 15 is a final plat for Belletona Addition Section 2 and acceptance of the public dedications contained therein, generally located on the north side of State Highway Number 9 and east of 36th Avenue Southeast, a closed section. Item 16 is a final site development plan and final plat for Trail Woods Addition Section 11, a planned unit development and acceptance of the public dedications contained therein, generally located one-third mile north of the West Rock Creek Road and one-quarter miles east of 12th Avenue Northwest. Item 17 is a declaration of surplus and/or obsolete equipment and materials and authorizing the sale thereof. Item 18 is the acceptance of a donation of a freezer valued at $880.86 from Institute for Build Technology and Safety to be used at the Little X Community Center. Item 19 is an amendment to a contract by and between Norman Municipal Authority and McKinney Partnership Architects, increasing the contract amount by $11,750 for a revised contract amount of $65,000 to provide additional architectural services related to the design of the Westwood Tennis Center Indoor Court Facility project and budget appropriations from the Norman Forward Fund balance. Item 20 is a memorandum of understanding with the Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security regarding grant funds in the amount of $764,377 received from the United States Department of Homeland Security to be assigned to the Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation to continue support of the statewide information sharing and critical infrastructure protection projects. Item 21 is acceptance of a grant in the amount of $69,200 from the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office to be used by the Police Department to increase enforcement and education of impaired driving, distracted driving, seat belt and child restraint laws, and to increase enforcement and education of pedestrian, bicycle and vehicle traffic ordinances, tuition costs for police motorcycle instructor training, approval of a contract and budget appropriation from the special grants fund balance. Item 22, city attorney's recommendation for approval of a court order in the amount of $7,106 regarding Barry Griffin versus the City of Norman Workers Compensation Commission case. Item 23 is a resolution appropriating $6,953,449 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund Balance to close out year-end accounting entries for FYE 2018. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Is there a-
Second.
Second. Are there any comments from council regarding any-
I have a quick question for Mr. O'Leary.
Is that coming through? There we go. There. Thank you.
So a question about number 17, item number 17. If I were interested in purchasing an Alamo Batwing Brush Hog, year 2007, in fair condition, how would I go about doing that?
So you're talking, council member, talking about the surplus sale of equipment-
Yes.
-here. I'm probably not the best source for that. I know we manage the city's fleet and our group would have retired this piece of equipment that you're referring to. But Mr. Francisco might be a better source in terms of how we advertise for this. But this is advertised. I know on the fleet items, we do an electronic or a web advertisement that has been very successful here in recent years as opposed to more of the in-person sale that we used to do. We get a lot more money for our vehicles and they turn over much more quickly. So that's also advertised through the city's website and other sources.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question about item number 19. I think that's for Mr. Foster. Hi, Judd. There were some questions that have come up regarding item number 19 as related to the indoor Westwood Park. I was just wondering if you could, since that's a little bit of a unique situation, or kind of give us, update us and for the public kind of what's happening there and what this item is that we're voting on?
Sure. Be glad to. Judd Foster, Director of Parks and Recreation. Quick summary, I guess, of what has gotten us to this point. On the, this is a Norman Forward project for the Westwood Tennis Facility. We started with a $1 million budget, which included two new outdoor courts and two indoor courts. The outdoor courts have been constructed now. They were completed for a cost of $230,000, a little more than $230,000. We had then entered into a contract with McKinney Partnership Architects to provide design services for the indoor facility. And we've taken on some other miscellaneous costs. We've moved some trees and done some waterline works, permits, other miscellaneous costs for the project. The McKinney project, or the McKinney contract was $53,250, and then the miscellaneous costs of about $18,500 so far. So that left us a project balance of around $700,000. Then on June 12, the city council entered into a contract, CMAR contract, Construction Manager at Risk contract with Flint Co. to provide the construction of the project. That was for $98,681. And then on August 14, the city council did a contract, or an amendment to that contract with Flint Co. and provided an additional $1.38 million to subsidize the rest of the costs. This was following Flint Co.'s bidding of all of the work, all the products and services and everything to build the building. And at that meeting, in addition to the amendment to their contract, the council authorized an appropriation of $789,528 to the, to that project from the Norman Forward Fund balance. So that's where the money comes from, the extra funding to finish the project. Since that time, since the beginning of the project, we have asked McKinney Partnership to do additional services, services beyond the original scope of their contract. Those have included resizing the building. This is in an effort to reduce the cost of the project because it was, it was quite a bit more than we thought it was going to be originally. And we, at our request, added HVAC, added an HVAC system into the project. Felt like it would be, project would not be successful in the heat of the summer and the coldest part of the winter without those systems in place. Also had to redesign the footings, the original footings from the building based on the Geotech Services report from the, once we got onto the site. So, and then they've done some other things, too. They prepared some specifications that were used when Flint Co. rebid, or not rebid, but bid out the building package for different submittals that might be submitted. All of those were in addition to their original contract. And as per their contract with the city, they're entitled to extra compensation for those services. Those are submitted to you for consideration tonight in the amount of $11,750. That brings their total contract to $65,000. Hope that answers your question, and I'd be happy to answer any more.
And just for the benefit of the folks watching at home, can you kind of tell us what a CMAR type contract is? What does that mean?
Construction manager at risk. It means that, that for a set price, they're going to deliver the project.
So it's kind of like a fixed-price contract?
Yes.
So that means that any further risk of additional costs, the contractor is assuming that risk?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, that, I would say with the exception of something we may choose to add on or something of that sort of-
I understand.
As per the plans and specs, they have to deliver it for that price.
So if, if there's any further increases in prices like steel or something, that will be a risk accepted by the contractor?
Yes.
And is that kind of part of what got us, or I assume that we ended up going over budget, let's say, because of things that we did not anticipate, like the footings and the soil issues, or cost increases in the bids that came in from what we had budgeted?
Some of those. The initial building package price increased from when we started and had estimates as a result of steel prices, concrete prices, the price of the fabric and fasteners and all the parts and pieces of the, of the building were part of that increase, yes.
I mean, I guess let me just ask the direct question. Was it possible, or I mean, could we have built the quality of a, of a facility that we had promised the people in, in Norman Forward at the budgeted price that we had available at that time?
Absolutely not.
So our options were either to not do the project, which is maybe not even an option since the voters voted on it, or to solve this unfortunate financial situation we found ourselves in, really kind of beyond our control?
That's correct. Yeah, we want to deliver a quality project, and this is the best way we felt to do it.
Was, did this go through the Norman Ford Oversight Committee? And if not, is it something that should have before it comes to?
The, the CFOB looks at actions that the council have taken after the fact. And so they have seen the, the original contract with Flint Co. And they, at their August meeting, I believe they saw the, the agenda packet that you all approved for the amended, amended project cost and those details. They haven't met since August 27 or something like that, whatever that date was. Yeah, I don't, they received the, a list of actions that the council had done, and among those was this Flint Co. contract. There wasn't much discussion on it, but, but it was mentioned. And I don't know that there'll be, there may be further discussion as well, but not a, thank you. Okay.
So my question is, why was an HVAC system not included in the original design for this facility? It seems like a no-brainer, so.
Well, it was felt that, at one point, that we could get, get by without it by ventilating the, using kind of an overhead door-type wall, if you will. Sections of the wall could be lifted. This is the way that we looked at a facility at the Kickingbird Tennis Facility in Edmund. It was built that way where it's like large garage doors would raise and open ventilation up through the building. And then we went to a different building package that didn't include those. And once we got to that point, we felt like the ventilation wouldn't be there, so it was something we added in later.
The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
This brings us to miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity to address the council as a whole. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to five minutes or less. Comments from the audience. Here comes Jane.
Jane Crumpley, 423 Elm. Mine is that companies should clean up at the completion of their project that they do on your street or in your neighborhood. of their project that they do on your street or in your neighborhood. Sometime in August, early August, flags began to appear on the east side of the 400 block of Elm from Sims to Toberman. Weeks went by. I'm trying to mow around them. The first home game is there. People get out of their cars, stomp on the flags. So I ran into Mr. O'Leary and asked him if he knew, and he said no. And as always, with as busy as he is, he writes it down and says, "Someone will be back in touch with you." And as always, they are. And it was an AT&amp;T project to do fiber optics to bury them. So again, time passes. Finally, bright colors appear on our driveway, marking more utilities. The contractors show up, they dig a couple of big holes, they do whatever they need to do, and they leave. So dirt's washing in the street, the flags are still there, the colorful colors all over our driveway and sidewalks are still there, in spite of the rain. I don't know, can I pick up these flags and move them, throw them away? The dirt's washed into the street. So if they can't scoop it up themselves, they should reimburse the city to send down a street sweeper. I mean, I don't think there's any excuse, when the contractors are through, for not going back and cleaning up after themselves. And this happens a lot in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look into that. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is James Cook. I represent a, a large group of veterans that have invested in a grow operation here in Norman.
Can you give us your address?
Oh, I live at a, my mailing address is, or I live at 1819 Creighton Court, Norman, Oklahoma.
Okay.
Leave Ward 6. The concern is, Moore as a city has already streamlined this process and has made itself very appealing to businesses in this realm. And they've already gotten to open it up for permitting at the city level. And they're mimicking, they're going off the state regulations, which is, is basically the best practice across the board. Our concern is delaying this permitting process is putting people like myself and my, my group of veterans that have invested large sums of our own money in these businesses, and have already put side leases and buying equipment, et cetera, in kind of a limbo state. And meanwhile, Moore has streamlined the process. Based upon the percentages that passed voter-wise in the city of Norman, I would like to see city of Norman mimic what Moore has done and make it more, streamline the process for those of us that are trying to do that. I'm an OU graduate. I've, I bought a home here in Norman because I love it. Everyone involved is local. There's no state, out-of-state members in our group. And we want to keep it Norman local, but at right now, the way things are, we're in a limbo state, and it's our own finances tied up that are just in a waiting state. We would also like indoor grow operations to be considered provisional in light industrial, because we are, we've already, we've already got a licensure from the state, so we're, it's for medicinal side. We want to grow things for depression and PTSD. That's what our aim is. We're not, we're not going to go, we're not ever going to go recreational. We want to strictly stay medicinal. The reason I bring that up, light industrial is zoned for pharmaceuticals and breweries, and I feel as a indoor grow operation, we should be provisional, not special permission. Because it's, if it's an outdoor grow operation, I completely understand that being special because there's no control measures. Indoor grow operation, it's a heavily controlled, regulated, filtered, carbon scrubbed environment. And there's no outs, no more, no more impact on the outside than a pharmaceutical company or a beer brewery. And as far as the taxation, it being, we would like to some clarification if it would be at the point of sale at dispensaries or in between growers and dispensaries?
At the point of sale.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Walk up there and hand them out?
Yeah, we'll get them handed out. Thank you.
Mark Saroski, 9724 Lilly Lane, Norman. Some of you may recall, I was up here about a year ago about the same issue. I know there's been a changing under the guard, and I'm not looking to pick scabs, but I think part of the issue last year was the previous city manager, based on the articles that have come out. But what I came up here last year was about, was shipping containers and the fact that city manager and city staff are allowing these to infest our neighborhoods and our property when there's an ordinance that prohibits them. If you, I know I only got five minutes, but if you skip down to the second page and look at paragraph D, it says, "Such containers may not be permanently located in areas that are residentially zoned." This is about shipping containers. What some of the staff and previous city manager and the current development director wants you to believe is, we're talking about metal buildings. We're not talking about metal buildings. We're talking about shipping containers, and they're prohibited. And the city has the means to, if these things got permitted, wrongly permitted, because they're not allowed per this ordinance, we've also included some documentation from the building code that allows for the city to rescind permits that were granted for something that violated an ordinance. So I've also included some correspondence, because this goes back to February of 2017, when I've been trying to get this taken care of, and it just seems it's just fallen off the radar. Maybe I should have kept pushing for it. But what I'm asking for, I know, and I've also included photographs of what I'm talking about here in the back. So when you drive around Norman, these things are popping up here and there, and we have an ordinance all the way back to 2008 that prohibits these. They allow them temporarily for construction if there's a building permit, but they're not allowed in your backyard, your side yard, your front yard, in the right-of-way, the back-of-way, the whatever way, because the ordinance says in residential neighborhoods, these are not allowed, period. But yet, I still see them. I've got one in my neighborhood. I drive through Norman and I see them. Maybe they still have a building permit associated with them. But when I say building permit, I mean, there's construction going on, not a permit for the actual container. That's the only way these things are allowed, per the ordinance, in a residential neighborhood. So I'm asking respectfully if the city council would look into this further, maybe with the changing of the guard. The reality of what this says can come to light and not a bunch of pushback. So anyway, thank you.
We'll get an update on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. I want to make a comment on item number 19 from this evening. And let me start by asking a question. If I understand correctly, the original budget for the Westwood Tennis Center was $1 million. And, and since we've talked about it, maybe I can get an answer to this tonight. I think we're several hundred million dollars over that budget by the time we get to, how much? No, not, yeah, million, thousand, several hundred thousand dollars. Good. Thank you. That numbers, got to get it right. That matters. I, I do want to point out, though, that that's the same order of magnitude that the city went through some great efforts and a close vote in order to save by changing the reserve policy of the city of Norman. So that was something like $700,000. That's also the order of magnitude that many people think should keep the UNP TIF alive, because that's how much money goes to the Norman Public School, something like half a million dollars. But it's, it's, it's interesting to me, at least, and I just wanted to sort of raise this point, that when it comes to sort of counting the budget, what seems to be like a big several hundred million dollar investment, and what seems to be like a minor seven hundred, several hundred million dollar investment seems to vary with who's advocating for it. In the, in the case, Judd Foster just noted that, well, look, we had to do this in order to make the project something that, like what people would have wanted during the Norman Forward proposal. But of course, there are lots of disappointing things in the Norman Forward proposal, right? There's zero budget for the senior center. It's fairly clear that, given how tight the budget is, that the Canadian River Park will never happen either. So I wonder why we're cavalier with this several hundred thousand dollar budget issue, and we're very, very concerned about several hundred thousand dollars in another fashion. And it seems like it depends upon where the money is going more than anything. So I was, you know, basically hoping to ask the council for a little consistency in thinking about our dollar amounts. I think we do have to decide where we want to spend our money, and it looks as though the staff made this decision about where to spend the money rather than the council. So if we're going to worry about that amount of money, let's worry about that amount of money being fungible across large amounts of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Rogers, also at 633 Reed Avenue, not hiding where I live, or who I'm married to, as some people think. I also wanted to comment about item number 19, and also just the general functioning of the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board. So as Mr. Foster pointed out, often what we get are notices of decisions that have been made through council, which is your prerogative, and we don't really get a chance to weigh in on them in terms of the whole project. And certainly, that's something that you need to be looking at the whole project. If you're going to have an extra $700,000 here, where's it going to come from? So I'm going to respectfully ask that these things actually, that you use your advisory board to give you advice before you make decisions that would impact the entire budget. Also, would like to note that, and again, I'm speaking for myself, not for the board, to note that revenues are down about 6% from what they were projected to be at the beginning of the project. But spending, it was down by about $400,000, but I think now it's up by $300,000. So the math doesn't really add up. There's no way, unless we get some magical rebound of sales tax revenues, there's just no way we're going to be able to deliver all the promised projects. So I would just ask in the future that you give us a chance to put, to give you a little more feedback on how that would fit into what might be squeezed out of the project here or there, and then you'll have better input on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Eddie Boast, 3000 Bretford Way here in Norman. I'm part of the group that talked to you earlier about medical marijuana. When thinking about licensing, things like that, fees, I'd like maybe to keep in consideration that there are locals here that would like a chance to serve. We have served in the past. We hope to serve in a different way in the future. I heard in the meeting, something said about this being Norman, business will come. Well, that's true. Will it be local business? You know, will it be us in Norman, providing for people in Norman? When you're thinking of fees and permits and things like that, and I heard a lot of numbers kicked around. If we could be competitive, if you could keep it to a point where everybody has a chance, we'd really appreciate it. We just want to, we just want a fair share. We just want a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my turn this time? Okay. Well, get ready. No, I'm just kidding. I'll have a whole lot for you guys tonight. We recently had a, our ward meeting last Sunday before, not this past Sunday, but the one before that. The mayor joined us and a man and an errand with the Stormwater Citizens Committee and educated us on that very important issue and the vote that's coming up on that in 2019. So the turnout was not as, as awesome as the first time, but those of you watching at home, the, I'm planning a December 2nd ward meeting slash Christmas party, so hopefully you all will attend. And it doesn't have to be exclusive toward eight. You guys can all come and, so, I know, right? And so then the other thing I'm looking forward to is the, the medical marijuana ordinance. I agree. We need to make sure that what we do is equitable to our citizens in Norman, and hopefully I'm not missing anything important tonight. That's all I got. Cool.
I just want to thank everybody for coming to our meeting earlier and staying for this one as well. And if you're watching at home, there's a lot of big issues going on in Norman, whether it be medical marijuana ordinances, or we're about to propose the largest transportation bond in the city's history. We're trying to tackle stormwater in the next few months as well. There's so many big things going on in Norman, and we need all of you to continue helping us develop those plans and gain support for them. Other than that, I would just also thank everybody last week for participating in National Night Out. I had a really great time at the Triangle Fraternity and at the Moore Lindsey House, Norman's History Museum. So if you haven't been there before, I really strongly encourage you to go check it out. It's one of the oldest houses in Norman, and it's got all these great, wonderful Norman history items inside of it. They are in need of repairs, and one of the reasons I went there was because they had requested that some of us stop by and so they could show us some of the issues they're having with that old house, and maybe we could get them some help. So anyway, thank you all again, and we'll see you next time.
Okay. Well, first, I want to welcome Loretta to your first city council meeting. She is a high school student from La Dufia that's studying abroad with a leadership component, and she was lucky enough to pick a meeting with nothing off consent. So well done. But I hope you enjoyed the process that we have. There's a lot of discussion. I value the community input. Thank you for everyone that made comments tonight. National Night Out, I also had a really great time. Thank you for, to Lieutenant Robertson for being my escort. I also want to mention Indigenous Peoples' Day was Monday, and we had a large amount of celebrations on campus. And I want to thank the University of Oklahoma for all of the activities that were planned through there. It was a wonderful celebration, and, and I'm glad that we do that, and glad to see Oklahoma City has joined us with that as well. Today, I stopped by the Veterans Center, which, if you didn't know, is in Ward 6 on Robinson, to help celebrate Alan Van, his 100th birthday. And thank you to Mayor Miller for joining me. We had a lovely proclamation for him. And I was talking to residents, because they're registered, they're my residents, and I'll give you one guess about what they were most concerned about. It was their public transportation in Norman. They don't have vehicles. That's the only way they get around. And these veterans, people who fought and served our country are terrified. They're not going to be able to get around Norman. And again, I said it from the dais, and I'll say it again, unconscionable. I know that we are working on a solution to this problem, but to see the, the look of fear on these people's faces is, it's unconscionable. We have got to do better. I know that CART's been working with us. I'm excited to, I have a meeting with them on Thursday as well. And I know that we're in a unique situation, but this is about people. It's not just about numbers. And the veterans here in Norman deserve better. I would also mention, speaking of veterans, I would support with indoor growing, light industrial, permissive use. I, I think we, as we discussed, we can't treat things so differently. As Council Member Scott pointed out, with the requiring our residents to get an additional license, we don't charge additional licenses for other things. So I, I appreciate that discussion this evening. There's a gazillion events going on in Norman this weekend because it's bye week. So if you're bored, that is your own fault. Seriously, all over town. There's farm girl fairs, mix on Main, wine walks. There's car shows on Lindsey Street. There is so much going on. Hopefully, the weather will hold out. Take advantage of this bye week. Take advantage of this bye week and get out and enjoy your city because Norman has a lot to offer and I am proud to sit here tonight. So thank you. And before you go to Farm Girl and before you do your wine walk, you've got to come to the Ward 5 meeting at 10:30 at Franklin Baptist Church, 10:30 a.m. Every second Saturday, we have a meeting. There's about anywhere from four to 20 of us. Sometimes it's just me. But come on out, we'll talk about whatever you want to talk about. There's not an agenda. I'm just there to hear your complaints. And Mr., or praise, there's praise too. Mr. Swarovski, I apologize that we haven't resolved this issue with the storage container. I went back through my emails and I will hop back on that and make sure that we're all aware of what's going on. So I, thank you for coming though and being so fully prepared. That's cool. That's all I've got.
I also want to thank everybody for National Night Out. It was a wonderful, fun time to be with friends and neighbors in our local parks and talk about public safety. I made it to five events, but I think there were a couple I didn't make it to. So I do apologize for those folks who organized events that I wasn't able to make it to. But I know that Councilmember Holman made it by one or two of those that I wasn't able to. So you at least got to see other council people and our wonderful police and fire department. I did want to mention a couple of really fun activities coming up over the next couple of weeks. Of course, this Friday night is Art Walk here in Ward 4 in historic downtown Norman. So please get out this Friday night and support all of our local merchants and have a great, wonderful time in our downtown area. I also want to mention that on Saturday, the 13th, in conjunction with the city of Norman staff, Norman Public Schools, University of Oklahoma, the Sierra Club, Red Earth Group, Oklahoma Blue Thumb, Cleveland County Conservation Commission, a wonderful pilot project with some great community partners. We're going to be hosting the Eastwood Park Pollinator Garden Dedication and Creek and Park Cleanup Project. That's going to be from 10 to 1:30 in Eastwood Park. And so basically what's happened is there's a really neat monarch butterfly pollinator garden that the students at Lincoln Elementary School, along with volunteers, has constructed in the park through Judd Foster and our great Parks Department. And so we're going to be dedicating that park and have some of the kids there that helped be a part of that. And then we're going to do a park cleanup and a creek cleanup with our Stormwater Division. And we'll have people there as well making presentations about the additional work that's planned for the Riparian Zone for the Bishop Creek area to help protect that creek from further erosion and stormwater issues. So it's going to be a really wonderful, family-friendly, educational opportunity to learn about things that maybe you could take to your part of Norman. Because this is a pilot project that we hope other, other areas will look to implement in other parks or along other urban creeks. Also on the 20th is the hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Program from 9 to 2 at Lloyd Noble Center. And also on the 20th is the National Weather Festival from 10 to 2 at the National Weather Festival, National Weather Center. I also want to make you aware, give you a heads up that on October 26th, the Community Planning and Transportation Committee will be meeting. One of the items on that agenda will be the tree ordinance. And I know that's something that many of us up here have talked about. And many of you in the community have reached out to me as well. The 25th? I'm sorry, maybe it's Thursday, the 25th. At 4 o'clock here at City Hall is the CPTC meeting. And the tree ordinance is one of the topics that will be on that agenda. So if you're interested in that topic, I do encourage you to attend. I do just want to echo one thing kind of to our new interim city manager and to our staff. I do acknowledge and agree with Dr. Rogers' comment. I think that we should be utilizing the resources of our advisory board if we have things that are coming forward in the future that are going to be impactful to the budget, the overall budget of, let's say, of Norman Ford in some fashion. You know, we are looking to them for guidance and input. I do think that it makes sense in those circumstances that we do maybe run those things by them in advance. And then I also would like, and I've asked this question before, for that committee to also provide us some feedback on whether or not we need to begin the discussion or not on if other Norman Ford projects that are still in the pipeline, how their budgets are appearing and are we comfortable with maintaining their budgets at the current level? Or do we need to start having that tough discussion about, are we going to be able to fully fund all of these projects? I don't know the answer to that question, but it seems like that we have a citizen committee that provides that oversight. And that's an opportunity for them to start having that conversation if it is something that does warrant some further consideration by council. And I do also want to give some feedback to staff as well. I can't remember the gentleman's name who presented about the storage containers. But as I read over the information that he presented tonight briefly, I will tell you that I'm very concerned. It appears that our staff has indicated that a storage container could be put on any residential property as an accessory dwelling unit. And that is certainly not what I would have thought would be allowed and how our ordinance would be interpreted. So I do think that we need to take action post haste to clarify if what we have, the decisions that we have made were appropriate in that particular instance and/or whether or not we need to address clarifying or revising those ordinance as well. Because I don't think many of us up here would, would want to see storage containers in our residential neighborhoods as accessory dwelling units. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Just real quick, I'm coordinating with staff. But right now I'm tentatively planning on having an award meeting on Wednesday, October 24th. Kind of depends on whether Mr. O'Leary is available because he's our star speaker, but I love to hear what he has to say. And so I'll have some more information on that a bit later. But tentatively, it'll be a Wednesday night that seems to work best at the West Side Library. That's about it.
Councilmember Carter.
All I have is, I'd just like to remind everyone this weekend on Saturday from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., the Lindsey Street Merchants are having a car show, trying to attract people back to that end of town. And we lost two more businesses in the last month, the McAllisters and Taco Bueno. So the ongoing struggles of Lindsey Street endure. And this is an attempt by Lindsey Street Merchants to remind everyone that they exist down there. So to support them would be greatly appreciated.
Councilmember Bearman.
So it sounds like October is going to be the month of award meetings. We had our, my neighborhood's annual POA meeting tonight. And I got four or five messages asking me for updates about different things. So I promised them that I would get my rearing gear after OU Texas Weekend and schedule a ward meeting. So look for that before the end of the month. Also, the Aviation Festival is this Saturday, and I'm really excited about that. This will be, this will be Ellie's first Aviation Festival. It's 9 to 2 at Max Westheimer. And before that, we're probably also going to stop by the Norman Police Department Community Partnership Day. They have the annual shred-a-thon where you can bring a few boxes of sensitive information and they will shred it for you. We're also going to be putting her new car seat in and getting that car seat checked. I have a feeling that between my husband and I, we have a few bottles of old prescription medication that they will also dispose of for us. We don't have any ammunition that we need to dispose of properly. But if you do, that is the place to do it. And that is from 8 to 2 at the police station at 201 West Gray. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. City Manager.
Well, as most of you know, this is my first council meeting for the city of Norman as the interim city manager. And I've really been welcomed with open arms. And I feel like I've, you know, been here forever almost. A week sometimes turns into forever, you know? I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot. Everyone's been so helpful and I do appreciate that. City staff, we've been having one-on-one meetings with them and I'll be meeting with council members. And so I look forward to that as well. So I do have a little bit of information to share. We have a, the sales tax numbers came in for October. And the October sales tax were up 1.77%. Over the 18, 19 sales fiscal year, sales tax is up 2.51%. And so while it may seem modest, it's, it is a positive. And we're going in the right direction. And so hopefully that will continue to be a positive. The use tax, you know, it's up 28.77%. That's such a volatile revenue source that you never quite know what that number is going to be from month to month. And so you have to be really conservative when you look at those numbers. So, so anyway, the this morning, we had a little excitement in the weather area. The warning siren did sound in Ward 5. And, but fortunately, no structural damage was reported and minimal tree damage was reported. The siren worked as designed. So it didn't activate throughout the community. It activates in the area that's affected. And so we're happy, we're happy to know that that's working the way it's designed. On some more positive news, been getting some questions about West Main Street Bridge and when that will be back open. And it's still scheduled to be opened by about Thanksgiving. The contractor still pushed our construction. We have to give kudos to them, even with all the rain and everything. They've been really diligent in terms of getting that project, getting that bridge open. And so we're pretty confident. Of course, you always have that caveat that, you know, things can happen. But Thanksgiving should be ready to go. Also, in addition to the community partnership, we have the Household Hazardous Waste. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event on October 20th from 9 to 2. I understand this has been a real successful event. Excuse me. Allergies, I think. It's free to the Norman community. And I would encourage everyone to take a look at what the options, what the things are that you can bring. It's a good time to get those unwanted things cleaned out and, and bring those in. Also, they're looking for volunteers. So if you're wanting to volunteer, just contact the Environmental Services Division. 292-9731. You do have to do a little bit of training in order to volunteer for the event. But they, they need volunteers in a variety of areas. Surveyors, ask questions and survey the people that participate, traffic control, paint bulkers. And there will be some paint available to give out as long as the paint supply lasts. Tire handlers, electronics handlers, and the refreshment runners. Now, that's a pretty important job, I would say. So if you come, if you want to volunteer, you do have to go through a little bit of training that Friday afternoon before the event. It'll be here in this bill, in this room. And volunteers that come for the training, you'll receive pizza and a t-shirt. And you'll also, if you volunteer on Saturday, you also get some refreshments as well. So anyway.
Is there an age limit? Do people have to be over 18 or not, not the older end? No.
Oh, are the volunteers?
Yeah, are the volunteers?
I don't think so. Okay. So.
Because that's the good kind of thing for Boy Scout groups and that kind of thing. So, yeah.
But if they have a parent or guardian with them and they're younger, then that, yes, that's even better. So anyway. So that concludes my report. And again, I appreciate the warm welcome I've received. I look forward to serving the community for the next however long it might be.
And we're glad to have you here. I just have a couple of announcements. On Friday night at the Art Walk at the Mercury, which is down at the eastern end on the other side of Porter from 6 to 9, the Team Norman, which is the committee that has basically been working on an economic development strategic plan over the last year. And several council people have been on the committee. They are going to, we are going to host an open house at the Mercury, some free beverages, free, some free ice cream. And it will be an open house where you can learn about the things that we've been studying, the things we found out about Norman, our strengths and our weaknesses, and our initiatives in the area of economic development. So I encourage everybody that goes to the Art Walk, just keep going to the east and come on down to the Mercury and see us at the open house. There will be a band there as well. Also, on October 24th, before Mr. O'Leary has to go to Mr. Castleberry's Ward Meeting, we are having an ADA Open House. It will be right here in City Hall in the multipurpose room. And the purpose of that open house is to have an update presentation on the ADA Accessibility Study that we worked on all of last year. We're inviting all people from the disabilities community, people that work with the disabilities community, our seniors and anyone else that is interested. And it will be a good opportunity to ask questions and give input because this is just the beginning. We've just done the study. Now we have to start implementing the plan and we want as much input as we can get. So I encourage anybody that's interested to come to that. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you all for coming.